All right, we have returned to open session. At this time, is there any public comment? Right ahead.
My name is Kathryn Dykes and I'm a staff member here in Riverside District 96. I travel among the four elementary schools, so I just wanted to share a brief note with the Board of Education and with Martha. I wanted to personally thank the members of the Board of Education for providing staff members with the option to enroll our children into District 96 schools this year. I would also like to thank Martha and her team for initiating the idea and working out the logistics, which proved to be more complex than anticipated, I believe. This act demonstrated the willingness of each of you to do everything possible to meet the needs of children and families, both within and beyond District 96. The positive impact this has had on my family is immeasurable. It provided my boys with stability and structure during a year of uncertainty. It allowed both me and my husband the ability to carry out our professional responsibilities without the added stress of navigating our children's remote learning from eight to three. I've worked in District 96 for nine years, so I've always known what an amazing team of educators we have working with Kim Hefner at Hollywood School. But experiencing it through the lens of a parent has solidified my knowledge that our team here in District 96, and specifically at Hollywood, is second to none. Every single staff member, including classrooms teachers, specials teachers, specialists, support staff, office staff, and custodial staff welcomed my boys with open arms, figuratively, seamlessly weaving them into the Husky community. Brianna Kwazaborski and Ariel Shilitz worked tirelessly to establish a positive classroom culture while also providing meaningful academic experiences in both kindergarten and third grade, respectively. This year has certainly had its share of challenges, but having my children here at Hollywood School has allowed me to breathe a little easier every single day. As a traveling staff member, Hollywood has always been my assigned home school, but never did that title ring more true than it did this year. So sincerely, thank you to all of you with gratitude on behalf of myself and my husband, Tim, and our family. So I just, I can't thank all of you enough, and I will be sure to extend my gratitude to Jeff Miller because I know we had a board switch recently, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dykes. Is there any other public comment?
Thinking that could have been Bob's spot.
That must be it. That must be it. All right. Let's see. At this time, is there any other public comment?
There is not.
Okay. Then at this time, are there any proposed changes to the agenda? All right. Then that brings us to the superintendent's report.
All right. And I just want to share a number of items that relate to our ending of this school year and thinking about next school year. And the first one, I just want to share, I'm actually going to ask Angela Dozal if she would come and share with, for just a few minutes, just a really unique occurrence, activity that's happening at Hauser Junior High, and that's hosting the Mobile Museum of Tolerance on May 27th and May 28th. And just when I heard about this and Angela had shared it, I wanted to make sure that the board and the community knew about it as well.
So we're really excited because Susie Dees, who is the Director of Professional Learning at West 40, has been a part of the Simon Wiesenthal Foundation's work towards starting up this Mobile Museum of Tolerance. And so, once it started going, it was a slow start this year because of the pandemic, but once it was getting out there, Susie had brought it to the curriculum directors as an opportunity for us to bring it to our districts. So we are excited here in District 96 to have the Mobile Museum of Tolerance coming, as Dr. Ryan Toy said, the last Thursday and Friday of this month. And for seventh graders, we'll be able to experience this opportunity. The Simon Wiesenthal Foundation has provided the Mobile Museum of Tolerance to teach the impacts of bigotry, discrimination, and hate, while also the importance of diversity, tolerance, and inclusion. It has a theater setting so that students are in the bus, socially distanced, and they'll watch historical happenings and then have discussions that connect that past history to present-day situations. The resources, the activities, the discussions are all aligned to the Illinois State standards. They've done a great job of doing that. And it was great because the Civil Rights Unit fits really well with the unit our seventh graders are currently working on, which is the Reconstruction Era Unit. So they'll be able to tie what they're doing in the class currently with this experience coming up here next week. So, very excited to have it, have the opportunity. It will be here at Hauser all day, Thursday and Friday. If any of you are available, we welcome you to join us, and just looking forward to that experience.
Thanks, Angelo.
What are the specific hours on that? Because I'm kind of interested, I don't know if I can make that. Does it shut down at three? Like, is it school hours or it's school hours?
It is school hours. We are going to have, because Hauser's schedule is, for their in-person time, ends at one. We are going to have either a group come back, or they're already there for an extracurricular or something. April has the schedule worked out, but we do have a group going from two to three as well. So it will be regular school hours, and we've structured it so it's during their day.
Okay. This sounds very interesting.
Yeah, that's incredible. Wasn't Simon, was that a Holocaust start or originally started? I remember it started small, but then it grew and grew into this larger.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Angela?
Thank you. Thanks for finding that opportunity and making it happen at Hauser. Speaking of Hauser, I just also wanted to share just a, perhaps a brief modification to the graduation schedule. So eighth grade graduation is scheduled for June 3rd at 10:00 a.m. at Riverside Brookfield High School. It's going to be outdoors in the stadium there. And that's actually a weekday. We usually have this as a late afternoon evening event. And we'd also scheduled a rain date for Saturday, June 5th. And with the changes in some of the guidelines for crowds together, large groups together, say, we are looking at having June 3rd outdoor, hopefully, fingers crossed that we get good weather, outdoors at 10:00 a.m. at Riverside Brookfield Stadium. But if the weather is, if we do have rain, it's inclement weather, we're going to do a staggered schedule at Hauser. Because we just figured, it's often hard to plan around a rain date, especially when it starts to incorporate a Saturday, and families sometimes have relatives coming in. I don't know if during a pandemic, if that is necessarily the case, but we just thought it would be more streamlined and more predictable for families to do that. So we're going to be putting out some communication about June 3rd at 10:00, kind of rain or shine. It's just the indoor would be at Hauser. And I think, right now, April and Chris are planning either two or three staggered groups. So not everyone will graduate together, but we get everybody graduated in a couple hours. Also, certainly have invited all of the Board of Education members to join the graduation if you are interested. I think we won't be shaking hands, but maybe the nice elbow will work this year for graduate. So let us know if you're planning to join. I know we sent out an email about that. I know we've been updating our saliva screening information every month here, and so you have an update on that information. Also, I know a lot of people are starting to ask if we're doing saliva screening next year. It really is an open-ended question. We don't know the answer to that yet. District 102 just isn't sure that they'll be hosting the lab. Certainly, if they feel that there's a need for it, they would continue to do it. So they're really evaluating all of that. I think if they were to continue to have the lab available to us and to do the saliva screening, we would continue to partner with them. There is some very, you know, real likelihood that they would decide not to have the lab. It's not that we wouldn't want to screen or have a mitigation measure for COVID, it's just that things are becoming available over the counter. School districts can more easily now get a Clio waiver to do diagnostic testing, quick testing, in the school. So there's a couple different options coming, becoming available to us, so we will explore those options. We're going to work with our nursing team on that, and we'll be letting families know. But the saliva screening is, again, unsure in terms of our process for next year, but also what I do want to say is that we certainly want to continue to offer a, like, COVID mitigation measure, just to figure out what the best one is for us as we enter into next year, and hopefully with a much more vaccinated population. We've been sending out a lot of notices to our 12-plus-year-old students over at Hauser, and we sent one out about an opportunity at Hillside, there's an opportunity at Riverside Brookfield High School tomorrow, another opportunity in one of the South suburban school districts. So it's been great in that host sites are kind of readily sending out communications. I send them on to Hauser, and they're sending them out to parents. And I think April and Chris have shared that pretty much with everyone they send out, they get some feedback that says, "Thanks, that one worked for us. We took our children." So, so we're, you know, sort of slowly but surely getting there. The State Board of Ed actually met today for their regular State Board of Education meeting, and it was interesting, there were some kind of very much anticipated updates that came to us midday today. One is, you know, I think certainly unclear about vaccinations for children younger than 12, but there's some, you know, thought that it would be likely that children younger than 12 might still be able to get vaccinations this summer or into the early part of next school year. Again, we don't know for sure, but, again, thinking that that could also start to really favorably change how we're able to bring children together next year. But the State Board of Ed was clear that they said, "Subject to favorable public health conditions, the resolution is to resume full in-person learning for next year." That had already been our intention, but with the state making it absolutely clear that that is the intention for all Illinois schoolchildren to return to full in-person. For us, that is going to include lunch. I know we continue to just express our appreciation to families for partnering with us in this very unique transition that we made in April, that it really just helped us with scheduling and social distancing and just our safety guidelines for families to take children home. But we know that's created, it's a lot of coming and going for the children, and certainly for families to have the children at home. So we're anticipating full in-person return in the fall. Again, I like how the state said it's subject to favorable public health conditions. We will include lunch. Remote learning options are something that the state has kind of taken an interesting position on in terms of deferring to local decision-making around that. But again, I think just really strongly wanting to encourage families to come back to in-person as much, as best as they possibly can. We did send a survey out to our families this week, asking for people to kind of anticipate if they thought they might have a health condition of the individual child or a health condition in the home where they might need remote education. Right now, we have, I think, seven children that we've heard about that might need remote education. It likely would require the board to look at a policy around remote instruction. It's a policy, actually, interestingly, that had been proposed by the Illinois School Board Association back before the pandemic. It was probably an idea that maybe some high schools thought was interesting, but really elementary schools said, "That's optional, that's probably not something we would be doing." But now, again, sort of pandemic, or dare I say, hopefully post-pandemic a bit, that we may want to look at that. And again, just to be able to consider a more individualized approach for what I think will be a very small number of children that might do better with a remote educational program. But there's, there's some questions still to be answered on that as well, but I'll be bringing information, and Stephanie and I will work together in looking at that policy. And we'll, we'll take a look at that and make a determination if that is something that we would want to offer. I would anticipate, and I know teachers are asking this too, I would anticipate that with a very small number, that we might look to certain teachers, like a third-grade teacher at the district level, who would be able to incorporate, if there's a couple third-grade students, they'd be assigned to a class where probably a teacher would teach in a kind of dual-platform way. We might staff the room differently, whether that's, you know, set it up to be lesser enrolled or set it up to have an additional adult who might be able to support that dual-platform. And again, it depends. It could even be, you know, one child per grade level here and there. The number seven is, you know, spread across our district. They're not all going to cluster at a certain grade or at a certain school. So we're looking at all those options right now, but we anticipate that we'd be able to accommodate children in some, in some way. So that is, I think, everything on the superintendent's report. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a small question. With lunch, maybe you don't know the logistics yet, but are you considering large-scale lunch room, you know, like we have the new room at Central all at once? Are you considering smaller groupings or classes? Has that been figured out yet?
Not entirely figured out, but we've thought about it a lot. So somewhat it's going to depend, there will be, we believe there will be shifting guidance yet to come from Illinois Public Health about how many children can be together, and is it six feet apart or will be three feet apart? So it's going to depend if children are vaccinated or not. And then, setting up a scenario, we have been talking, we want lunch not to have such a significant impact on instructional day. We really want to make it happen within the 50 minutes that we have during normal times. We've said maybe 60 minutes if we needed, 10 extra minutes, and that would be to kind of move children through two or three lunch periods within our, kind of, what's been our normal lunch period. But potentially use a multipurpose room, a gymnasium, maybe a library, maybe a classroom, so probably spreading children out more than all being in one area.
Right. I know, just picturing like you used to push all the little bodies on the edge of the table, you know, and I'm thinking, well, that won't just physically fit, so I'm sure you'll work it out, but I was curious about.
A lot of schools doing it right now, having children eat in the classroom.
Yeah.
That's certainly doable. I think it's maybe not our preference. I think if we could cluster a couple classrooms together and do it in a safe socially-distanced way, that that would be our, our preference.
Okay.
It's a great question. It's another one of those, it's not fully.
Yeah, I'm sure you haven't worked it out yet. I was just curious if you started the discussion.
Martha, just a quick follow-up on the saliva screening. When you referenced next year and, you know, kind of the open-ended question, does that include potentially summer school? As I understand it, that will be in-person as well.
Right.
So is that unknown?
It's a great question. We did not set up saliva screening for the summer. I don't think the lab's going to be open for us, but I will, I will double-check on that.
Are we anticipating a normal-sized enrollment, as far as we know? Do we know our interest yet?
As far as we know. So actually, you have an enrollment report, I guess that's our spring enrollment report. Don Tofano and Jonathan Hoffner, I've been starting to look at the numbers and wanting to, to the best of our ability, anticipate, we are asking families, obviously, to do their registration, their enrollment, if they need to be doing their residency.
Right.
Make sure we're capturing that number. I think kindergarten numbers were slightly up from normal times. We do have some families, not a lot, where there are some, you know, they disenrolled or they decided to homeschool or go to a private parochial school. It's unclear if those families would come back.
Okay.
So again, there's just a little bit of variability. I would say it's fairly slight, but again, wanting to make sure that we are fully anticipating and ready for all the children that intend to come back.
Okay.
So certainly, public service announcement, please register and re-enroll if that's your, that's your plan, so. And we'll be bringing that forward, probably in June, we usually start to look at the anticipated new enrollment, because for us, it's often been the challenge of just making sure we have kindergarten appropriately scheduled and assigned. But really, this year, we'll, we'll look at everything, as we're right now in the midst of reaching out to the families that had to transfer schools because of the, at our request, to balance class size, particularly this last, this third trimester with the return. So re-assigning children back to their original home school, and there's, there's been some confusion with that, certainly understandable, and that children shifted around to their not usual places this, this year. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you, Martha. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Can the board secretary read the tonight's consent agenda?
Yeah, I'm going to do this slightly differently tonight, or I'm going to expand on a couple things differently tonight, because there's a few unique items that are in here, just to make sure there's clarity there. So I thought what I would do is just, I'll read everything, and then kind of go back on hit on like two or three things, I think three things that were in here. So tonight's consent agenda is approval of the April 7th, 2021 minutes of the closed session, minutes of the regular business meeting same day, April 21st minutes of closed session, and regular, regular business meeting minutes of the same night. The personnel report as presented, the orchestra position, the school year 2022 personnel recommendations, the substitute teacher rates for the 2122 school year recommended increases, staff appointments for the 2122 school year, non-union salary recommendations for the district office staff, payables pre-list as of April 30th, 2021, payables pre-list as of May 19th, 2021, and approval of holidays administrator slash district office non-union support staff. So the couple items I wanted to expand on just a little bit further, Martha and I, as, this is kind of personnel committee stuff, we went over, we actually talked about this one at the last board meeting as well. So the orchestra intergovernmental agreement here is for the, like, part-time hybrid thing and everything that we discussed last week. So this is just the agreement that was drafted with our legal team and the RB Riverside Brookfield legal team. It's, it's a pretty specific, unique contract to this position to figure out how, you know, all that stuff is going to work. So there's a lot of legal, legalese in there, but we were told that it is appropriate, so I believe that. The, let me see, the SY 2022 Personnel Recommendations is a, is essentially an add to staff, and this really gets at a lot of the discussion we've been having around what do we need next year to help our students kind of get back into school? And Martha and her team have really dug in, and what this memo really lays out is kind of a high-level rationale around why these increases are needed and, or where and why. So we have a total of five and a half additional staff for, across all the schools. It's hitting on English language, math intervention, permanent substitutes for the different capacities that are in here. So we really worked out, like, what we think students, what we know students need now and what we think they will also need then in the future. But then also, there's a little bit of students that were in the district that are not in the district that might come back into the district and new fans. So there's like all these different components that go into it, and so just trying to prepare ourselves to not be, we're already kind of maxed out with the capacity of some of these folks, so just trying to get a little more breathing room for the unknown, and just from some of the additional support that we might find that we need through MTSS processes and things like that next year. The last item I wanted to expand on was the, or well, just state more explicitly, the district office salary increases. We just, we state that just so everybody is aware and it's public transparency. The overall, there's 13 people in this group, the overall increase here is like just under 3% across the board. So that's more just a statement for acknowledgement than anything else. And that's it.
Okay.
Very small consent agenda today.
Long preamble there, yes. All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to say one quick thing. So I had an opportunity to get myself up to speed on the consent agenda items as presented, but I recognize I was not yet a board member at the April 7th Cal meeting nor the April 21st regular business meeting, but I trust my fellow board members with the accuracy of the minute meetings as presented, and I feel comfortable moving forward.
All right. Anything else? All right. Kathy, can you call the room?
Mr. Marshall?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Mirhan?
Hi.
Ms. Dunn?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
And Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is the Riverside Education Council. Anyone here tonight? All right. Then that brings us to board member comments.
Thank you for the crackers and the.
Yes, indeed.
That was very nice of Ms. Dykes.
Dykes, thanks.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, I would like, I know in non-pandemic times, we talk about things, but I just, I do want to say a special appreciation, Martha, and to April May and the Hauser staff for sending those notices out about the vaccinations. I do think that's an important step in getting us back to school. I know that it was recently, I mean, last week, they approved it for 12, and it's over. I mean, my daughter got vaccinated last week, and I know a couple other people who did, so I think it's very important, especially given everyone wanting to go back to school, as much normalcy as possible next year. And so, I appreciate her doing that and keep doing that, so.
Thanks. I didn't think I'd talk this much, so just, sorry. Quick comment that, you know, just wanted to make mention. So as a parent, you know, I've been very impressed by the work that goes on in our district, and as the newest board member, I just feel really privileged to be able to serve this community. I just wanted everyone to know, I recently did have an opportunity to begin my new board member orientation alongside Martha and the district leadership team. I've been learning so much beyond my role as parent, as it relates to teaching and learning, special education, technology, finance, facilities. So really, just thank you. I'm excited, and, and, you know, thank you for helping me onboard thus far, and I'm just excited and looking forward to the work that's ahead.
And well, thanks, Stephanie, for joining us for a kind of an expanded version of a board orientation. We hadn't quite done it that way before. We probably shared more with her than she maybe was ready to learn, not really. She was, asked great questions, and it was, it was really nice opportunity. We met in person, too, so it's nice. Thank you for being part of it. And Dan joined us as well, so.
I was there for a little bit of it as well, and I agree, that's something that would make sense to do going forward. It was a great resource, just for me, someone who's been on the board for a while, it was great to hear a lot of these things discussed, and some things, wow, I didn't quite, I wasn't aware of before. Some of the other cooperatives, that's just not something I've heard discussed much previously, so it was good to find out about that. And also to be reminded about what, what great people we have working for the district. It's people definitely very intelligent and at the top of their game. That's, that's great to hear from them and hear on their expertise.
All right. So next, that brings us to committee reports. The first item is Facilities Committee.
Thank you, Dan. Net me, meaning myself, David, and the rest of Martha's Facility Advisory Committee will be meeting next week. While we're done with, hopefully, with the major portions of our capital spending, we will be looking at our continuing improvements and maintenance of our campuses, and that is, that's never done. That's an important part, and once we've built something, we have to take care of it. We'll obviously be talking about the contracts that are going on, that will be during the summer, the Hollywood work and the fire protection. And then I think the major point of our conversation will be a proposal by DLA on changes at Blythe Park for potential two-section school options. And then obviously continuing some other items that are in the agenda that's identified. So if anyone has any comments or wants to suggest a focus, continuing focus for the committee, then please reach out.
Thanks, Joe. Next is the Education Committee.
Do you want to go first? I'll follow you.
Yeah, no, we were able to meet, Sheri and I, with Martha and Angela this week, and start discussing more in-depth the strategic plan, the draft of the plan, and how it relates to teaching and learning, and yeah, started to go into that. So we're, before we have our board meeting reviewing the plan, I think every, you know, committee is meeting. So it was a great first meeting, and I look forward to diving into some of the topics.
Yeah, I know, I know, for me, you know, and I'm sure Angela and the staff were always thinking about what kind of professional development do we need, addressing any learning gaps if they exist, and also equity amongst subgroups or any, any child that really needs anything, making sure they have the supports that they need. So it's really a nice way to plan ahead of time and to make sure that, you know, everything goes smoothly next year and that it's, of course, following the plan. So I'm looking forward to the details for that, but it was great. Thanks.
Yep.
All right. Next is the Personnel Committee.
I pretty much said my piece in the consent agenda, but one thing did pop into my head just for clarity, the, the positions, those five and a half FTE, those were not hired people, those are just the approval to create the position to then hire them. So I just, I just wanted to think it through what I said, and I just want to make sure that's clear for anybody that's kind of looking through this. Other than that, I got nothing else for you.
Definitely appreciate that clarification. All right. And then next is the Finance Committee.
You know, there's not much to report, and I know we're going to be talking about the budget in a little bit, so.
Just for your time.
Yeah.
All right. And that brings us to the Policy Committee.
Yeah, just a small update. The committee has taken a look at the, a preliminary look at the press policy related to remote education that Martha referenced earlier, and is examining this for future board considerations, so likely more to come on that. And additionally, I know that they anticipate the next press update will be delivered mid-June, so we look forward to reviewing that when it's released, some light summer reading ahead.
Now, when you talk about policy and we all go, "Oh, don't take it personally." Because I know we tend to.
Yeah, don't take it personally.
We have a special disco ball that descends from Policy Committee.
No, I, and.
Now, when you talk about policy, and we all go, oh, don't take it personally.
Yeah, and I would do this whole thing. So, yeah, don't take it personally.
We have a special disco ball that descends for the policy committee.
No, I anticipate there's going to be a lot of policies next year that are going to be very interesting, and, yes, a lot of attention will be put towards them.
The remote, remote learning one, I'm actually, I think, is fascinating. So, I think that's an important one, and I like that we're making sure we're on top of that. So, thanks.
All right. Thanks, Stephanie. All right. Next item on the agenda is old business. There's nothing under old business, so.
First time ever, I think.
First time ever, okay. Then that brings us then to new business. First item is nurses' appreciation proclamation. And, you know, definitely, I want to say on behalf of the board, it's, if ever, if ever an appreciation day had been earned by our staff, it's been this year. Nurses, school nurses is a tough position to begin with. This year, we've asked a lot over and above what was normally a part of their workday. A lot of, lot of late nights doing contact tracing, a lot of phone calls, a lot of, you know, a lot of temperature checks, just a lot of things that are outside the normal duties of nurses that we, they've done for us this year. They've helped us keep the schools open. They've helped us keep kids in school. And we definitely appreciate their work that they've done for the district. Martha, was there anything?
Totally agree on that one. I think that is probably, maybe it's the most significantly changed job during a pandemic in terms of what people might expect their job to be. Certainly, that's been true of everyone this year. But our nurses have done an outstanding job. So, thank you. We will pass that along. As a matter of fact, we're framing the proclamation for each one of them, right, Kathy? We're going to deliver them to them tomorrow.
Okay. And then the next item is the IASB Board Self-Evaluation, scheduled for August 4th, 2021. I think that will be taking the place of a committee of the whole meeting.
So, that is our final date.
So, they're still holding July 19th. But August 4th, because it's a regular meeting, it's typical committee of the whole, first Wednesday. If that works for people, it seems to be, you know, it's kind of on the predictable, or the predicted calendar. So, we'll go, we'd like to go ahead and confirm that if everyone's in agreement. So, this is kind of an opportunity to.
Do we anticipate, I know that we, last summer, like, summers passed, pre-pandemic summers, they were lighter. But last year, the summer got very, you know, like, we needed the meetings. There was a lot to discuss. Do we predict, my only concern would be, is that, is that August 4th meeting going to be necessary to talk about any sort of learning, you know, schedules or changes or COVID-related?
I think we can, I think we can sort of afford to take the evening. And if there was some board business that we had to attend to, we could tack that on. So, if you're comfortable with that, that maybe would be a bit longer, longer. Although, I do remember the self-evaluation is not brief. It is several hours, I think. So, we could also schedule a special meeting. I appreciate your thinking about that. We are, our goal is for June, committee of the whole, is to bring the strategic plan forward. It's why we've also checked in with all the committee chairs, so that there is a lot of understanding about the strategic plan as we bring it forward. I know we've been sort of providing those updates along the way. I see us as, you know, launching the new plan at the start of the new school year. But we could use August board for even just sharing the goals. I know goal-setting has been something we've spent a decent amount of time, I think, with the strategic plan. That becomes much more of a kind of streamlined process for, for the board and the administration and, obviously, all of our educators. So, it seemed like there was the greatest sort of, sort of, board availability with that, with that particular evening, if that still holds true.
And that's good. I just wanted to make sure that, just to say it out there, that if something does come up, we would probably have to sacrifice some board evalu, you know, self-evaluation to do business. But I just want to make sure that we.
Or, or a special.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to make sure that we don't get in a situation where the self-evaluation gets pushed off because of real business that needs to get, you know, happen. So, I just, kind of just wanted to mention it, to make sure that we are.
I think it'd rather be a tandem special meeting than it.
Yeah, okay, great. I just want to make sure that we are committed to this.
And we at least have a few weeks before the start date of school. I think we could manage, like, our point.
Yeah, okay.
And then what the strategic plan, you think, because your plan to just, like, get through the whole thing in June, and then maybe a follow-up in July? There's a lot there. So.
Yeah.
I think June and July together should be enough. But.
Yeah, I think we'll do a strong overview in June would be, is our plan. And then, actually, our, our administrative team met today with CEC to talk about what they call living the plan. So, we're going to have some additional detail. And then, what we'll be launching our, you know, action teams, once we decide sort of which of, which of the broad goals we'll want to dig into in the first year. You know, carefully reminded, it's a five-year plan. So, I know there's kind of that idea of taking it and like, let's, let's get it all done next year. And we know that's not possible. It really is something that needs to be, you know, paced out over a course of five years. I think it'll be part of regular COW and even board discussion along the way as our guiding document.
So, for August 4th, would that be like a 6:00 PM start, and then like 6:00 to 9:00? Or do we, do we have, yeah, okay.
So, people that would hold that, we'll confirm that with the Illinois Association of School Boards.
You have a few days.
All right. Then the next item on the agenda is the amended budget for, tentative amended budget for fiscal year 2021.
Hi. Since we adopted the budget last August, there's been some significant changes in the spending for this year. For instance, the ESRS money that's come in. We also had some federal grant money that wasn't spent the previous year that rolled over into this year. So, I, and, and the capital projects, we've now approved some that some of the spending will happen this year before, before the new budget. So, what, what we'll do is, I published the amended budget here next month. We'll have a hearing at the beginning of the meeting, and then later in the meeting, vote to adopt it. So, that's, then we'll have a more accurate budget for the year. We did this around this time last year, if you remember. Any questions on the amended budget?
Just for clarification for the folks following at home, the ESRS being the pandemic stimulus?
Yes, yes. Yeah, that, that was, I think CARES one was already in there, that 150 that first came out. We got that before we did the budget. And then the 593, almost 600,000 is the biggest change for current budget.
All right. Any questions? All right. If no questions, then we'll move on to the next item, which is fiscal year 2022 budget.
All right. So, we're currently putting together next year's budget. And we'll have first draft to present at the June COW, June 2nd. And then, we'll refine the budget and come back with a presentation on June 16th. And that'll be the tentative budget. That's the one that'll go on display. And then in July, we'll have another hearing, but that'll be for, you know, the year that starts in July, and vote to adopt also at that July 21st meeting. So, I just wanted to, since we're talking about budgets, give you the plan for both of them.
All right. Makes sense. Any questions for Jim on the budget?
Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Jim. Okay. Stephanie, you'll note that all meetings are this short.
She's smiling under her mask. I don't know if I trust you.
All right. Is there any additional public comment?
There is none.
Okay. Then future meeting dates, June 2nd, 2021 is the committee of the whole meeting, Ames Multipurpose Room. Just before I run into all these, is there any discussion or talk of returning any meetings to other schools?
So, this became sort of a pretty comfortable space in terms of our ability to socially distance and still hear each other. We were just talking about that before the meeting, actually. I, I would anticipate for the start of the new school year that we would return to Hauser. We could probably return there this summer, but they're going to be doing the fire protection work. And so, a lot of the building's going to be off limits, and mentioning as fire alarms will be shut down, that kind of thing. So, we could certainly, you know, go back into the rotation, avoiding Central and Hauser this summer. I'm, I'm really waiting for guidance to shift on public meetings. We just haven't heard it about mask-wearing. So, I know it would be a lot easier for us to hear each other, but we will, we will wait a little bit longer. But I'm hoping that that may be sooner rather than later. Perhaps by the time we're doing our self-evaluation, we'll be able to sit a little closer together without our masks on. But we'll wait, we'll wait and see. I think we're getting closer.
Okay. That is good to know. Yes, so June 2nd, 2021, committee of the whole meeting at the Ames Multipurpose Room at 7:00 PM. June 16th, 2021 is the regular business meeting, Ames Multipurpose Room at 7:00 PM. Board will enter into closed session at 6:30 PM if necessary, and return to open session at 7:00. July 7th, committee of the whole meeting, Ames Multipurpose Room at 7:00 PM. July 21st, regular business meeting at Ames Multipurpose Room, 7:00 PM. Board will enter into closed session at 6:30 PM if necessary, and return to open session at 7:00 PM. And if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.